I am really excited for today's deep work lesson story. Today, we're taking a look at the story of Gandhi. Gandhi, a very famous, very influential figure or person from history. Here's the plan for today. We're going to begin today's lesson with a quick read of the story. Yeah, this will just take a couple of minutes. You can sit back, relax and listen as I read the story to you quickly the first time. Then we will do a vocabulary breakdown. Yeah, we will take a closer look at some of the more challenging language used in the story. And basically just make sure that we understand everything. After that, we will go back and revisit the story or read it again. And this time it won't be a quick read, it will be a deep dive. A deep dive into the text to make sure we understand the story and all of the language and all of the themes or ideas in the story at a deep, deep level. Okay, finally, at the end of today's video, we will go into discussion questions and speaking practice. This is a really valuable part of the lesson where you will have opportunities to speak out loud and practice spoken English, which I know is something that my students are always looking for opportunities to do. It's something that you don't have many chances to do in real life, so it's important to stick around until then. Now, before we dive into this lesson, I'd like to take one second and ask a small favor of you guys. Please click like on this video to support me as your YouTube English teacher. Every like that you give me, it encourages me. It encourages me, it makes me feel good about what I'm doing. It makes me feel your support and it helps my lessons reach more people. I was shocked at the growth of this channel. The last two weeks, we have gained thousands of subscribers, which I honestly did not expect at all. So thank you guys so much. I know that most of you are already liking the videos, sharing them, you're subscribed, you're commenting. I really appreciate your support, but if you're not subscribed, make sure you click subscribe so you never miss another one of my lessons. Practice English with me every day. Watch one of these deep dive lessons every day and I guarantee you that you will see some big results. This is the best way, the best way to reach English fluency. Okay, now, one more thing you can do to support me is leave a comment, right? You can leave a comment to support me even more. To add a little bit of a challenge to that, you can try using one of today's target vocabulary words, right? One of the difficult words that we're learning today. Okay, the life of Gandhi, I'm going to do a quick read of the story now. You can just sit back, relax and listen. In a small town in India, there lived a man named Mohandas Karamchand Gandhi. I hope I'm saying his name correctly. His name would later become synonymous with nonviolent resistance and the fight for independence. Gandhi's journey began in the hustle and bustle of London where he studied law. Despite the challenges, he remained steadfast in his beliefs. Upon returning to India, Gandhi was appalled by the injustices he witnessed. He couldn't construe how people could be treated so poorly. Determined to make a change, he began to peruse the laws and texts that governed his land. With each new piece of information, his resolve grew stronger. He realized that the latent power within the masses could be awakened through unity and nonviolent protest. Gandhi organized peaceful marches, boycotts and strikes, inspiring millions to join his cause. His ability to turn the tide against the British Empire was nothing short of remarkable. People often said he was a man who could move mountains with his words. He never believed in using force, but rather the power of the human spirit. One of the most memorable events was the salt march. Thousands followed him on a 240 mile trek to the Arabian Sea, where they made their own salt in defiance of British laws. This act of civil disobedience became a turning point in India's struggle for independence. Throughout his life, Gandhi remained humble. He often said, "An eye for an eye makes the whole world blind." His teachings and actions left an indelible mark on the world. Even today, people peruse his writings for inspiration, hoping to find the latent strength to make a difference. All right, awesome job, guys. That was the quick read of the story. I'm curious how much of that you understood. If you found it a little challenging, if you found it a little difficult, don't worry, because now it's time for the vocab breakdown. We're going to talk about some of the more difficult language in the story. And then after that, we'll go back and read the story again, but more effectively. Okay, so the first word I want to talk about is construe. Construe, that's a verb. And a simple definition, or simply put, what it means is to interpret or understand something in a particular way. Rephrased or said a different way, that means to figure out what something means. Okay, so that's basically what construe is. It's to figure out what something means. Maybe interpret is a synonym or a word that's almost the same, right? Or deduce is a very similar word. Some antonyms or opposite words might be misunderstand or confuse. Okay, so to construe something is to interpret it, to deduce what it means, to figure out what something means. Okay, so here are a couple example sentences. Number one, "He couldn't construe how people could be treated so poorly." This example sentence is from our story, from the story of Gandhi, right? So Gandhi can't construe how people could be treated so poorly. Gandhi is looking around at the treatment of people and he can't figure out, right? He can't figure out how people could be treated so poorly. He cannot construe how people are able to treat one another so badly, right? He can't believe his eyes. Here's another sentence. "It's hard to construe his silence as anything other than agreement." Okay, now, this example sentence is not from the story. This is something unrelated, unrelated, right? This has nothing to do with the story, but let's take a look at it. "It's hard to construe his silence as anything other than agreement." So this person, he's silent, he's not talking, he's not replying. And what this is saying is because he's silent, you know, he must be in agreement. It's hard to understand his silence as anything other than agreement, right? So it's hard to construe him being quiet, him not talking as anything other than agreement. In other words, it must be, it must be agreement. Here's another word we saw in the story. It's actually a very commonly used word, a very colloquial word that people use all the time. But I'm not sure if you know what it means. Peruse, peruse, peruse. This S sounds like a Z, right? Is this a word that you guys use in your day to day lives? If not, maybe you should start using it because it's a great word. It means to read or examine something carefully, okay? To look at something closely and carefully, okay? Maybe just read could be a synonym here, a similar word. Examine is probably a little bit closer because we're not just reading something. We are reading it carefully, looking at it closely, right? We are really taking a fine, close look at something, okay? Opposite words, skim, overlook. Skim is a really good example of an antonym here. Because if you skim a text, skim an article, skim a story, that means you read it quickly. You read it very quickly, you do not take a lot of time to sit down and really examine the text carefully or really peruse the text. You just do a quick look, right? You just take a quick look. So skim is the opposite of peruse. Now, in the story, we saw, "He began to peruse the laws and texts that governed his land." So in other words, when Gandhi started to notice these social problems, he began to carefully examine the laws and texts that governed his land, okay? That governed his land or controlled his land. Laws and texts are what is governing the land, right? So laws are, I think we probably know this word, the rules of society. The rules that keep people in line, right? That keep people safe, hopefully. Those are the laws. Texts, right? The written information, the ways in which the laws are written down. These are the things that govern his land, that control his land, right? His country. And he starts to peruse these things or take a close look at them. Examine them closely in a way he never did before, okay? Here's an unrelated example. "She likes to peruse the newspaper every morning with her coffee." Yeah, so you know, it doesn't have to be some serious thing, the context. It doesn't have to be as serious as Gandhi perusing the laws and texts that governed his land, right? That's kind of an intense or heavy example. Usually, when we use this word, peruse, we use it in kind of a lighthearted way. Yeah, a lighthearted way. That means kind of casual, kind of fun, nothing serious, right? "She peruses the newspaper every morning with her coffee." She peruses, in this context, I'm reminded of an expression. "She flips through." Flips through the newspaper. Flips through, you know, she's flipping through pages, flip, flip, flip. It's more casual, right? It's not so heavy. She peruses the newspaper. Hey, is that something you guys like to do? Do you peruse the newspaper in the morning? Or these days, maybe you peruse articles online. Maybe that's how you get your news as opposed to a newspaper. You can let me know in the comments. Okay, up next, we have latent, latent, okay? Yeah, you don't really hear people pronounce it as latent, latent. Because a lot of the time, we English speakers are a little lazy, right? And if we can find a way to say things in a lazier way that takes less energy, then we probably will. So we don't say latent, latent, we say latent, latent. Laynt, a latent, okay? If something is latent, that means it's existing, yes, it does exist, but it's not yet developed or visible. So it exists, but it hasn't really come into its full form yet, right? In other words, it's there, something is there, but it's not obvious yet. It's not tangible. Another way we could say this is tangible. Tangible is a great word, you guys should know this word. Tangible is something that you can wrap your mind around, something you can understand fully, right? Like, "He gave me some tangible ideas for what we could do this weekend." "He gave me some fully formed ideas of what we could do this weekend," right? If something is tangible, that means you can grasp it. You can grasp the concept of it, right? It's, it's able to be grasped, it's able to be fully understood. So if something is latent, it's not very tangible. You're not quite able to grasp what it means, right? Okay, so some similar words might be hidden. Dormant is a lot closer. Hidden eh, maybe a little bit, maybe a little similar, but dormant is a great closely related synonym. If something is dormant, that means it's kind of in a state of sleep. A state of sleep, right? Like, it's not really online, it's not really woken up, okay? So it's a lot like latent. Let's look at some example sentences here. Yeah, antonyms, obvious or active, so those mean the opposite, right? If something is obvious, then you know, it's tangible, you can grasp it easily. If something is active, then it's online. So those mean the opposite of latent. Okay, example sentence one from the story. "He realized that the latent power within the masses could be awakened." Okay, great example sentence here, the masses. That means the people of India, you know? The masses, that means the common people, uh, you know, the ordinary people. And there's many of them, right? The ordinary people of a country, the masses. Okay, so Gandhi realizes, he has this realization that there is power, there is power within the masses, there's power inside of them, power. And it's a latent power, okay? It's a power that the people don't realize they have. It's a dormant power, a hidden power. It is not obvious, it's not an active power. It's a latent power within the people. And even better, this power could be awakened. You could wake up this power with the right words, with the right actions. You could awaken or tap into, that's another good way to say this. Tap into, or maybe harness, harness, maybe access, access that power, okay? So here's another example. "The latent potential in the young artist was evident to all who saw her work." Ah, great example. The latent potential, the dormant potential, right? So she has a lot of potential. Potential means like what she could do, right? What she could do, she could do amazing things. She has a lot of potential, a lot of latent potential, latent skill, latent ability, right? She's young, she has a lot of potential, she has her whole life ahead of her, right? And this is evident or clear or obvious to all who saw her work, right? So even though she's young, if you look at her work, if you look at the artwork that she's producing, there's something very evident to you. There's something very clear or obvious to you, which is that she has latent potential. Wow, she's capable, she is capable of doing great things. Okay, one more thing to talk about here before we jump back into the story for a deep dive is this idiom. Yeah, an idiom in English is like an expression, expression, right? It's something that people say. People say often, "To move mountains." This is a really useful and honestly fun to use idiom, okay? So basically, it means to achieve something difficult. Something is hard to do, something is challenging, something is not easy, but you make it happen. You make it happen, right? You make it happen. Rephrased, you do something very hard, achieve the impossible, accomplish a lot. An antonym might be you give up, you can't do it, you fail, right? So in the story we saw, people often said he was a man who could move mountains. How? With his words. Ah, yes, Gandhi, he believes in nonviolence. He doesn't want to use force. He doesn't want to use his body or weapons to get what he wants, right? To control people. Instead, he uses his words. He uses the power of language to move mountains, to achieve difficult things, to achieve the impossible, right? Here's another example. "She felt like she could move mountains after hearing the motivational speech." Ah, what's a motivational speech? You guys know that a speech is someone talking, right? If somebody gives a speech, then they talk, they give a talk, right? A motivational, motivational speech is a speech that inspires you. It's a speech that inspires you, right? It fills you up with inspiration. So the woman in this example, she hears a motivational speech and it really connects with her. It really connects with her or touches her. Or maybe we could say, it gets her fired up. That's a fun expression, gets you fired up, makes you feel like, yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready to go. I'm ready to get after it. There's a very, uh, get after it. There's a very commonly used expression here. If you use this expression, you will sound really native. "I'm ready to get after it." That means I'm ready to do it. I have a big goal, I have a big idea, something I want to do and I am going to accomplish it. I'm going to get after it. Hopefully, my YouTube videos are somewhat inspirational for you guys. I want to inspire my students and really show them that they are capable of a lot. To use our last vocab word, I want to show you guys that you have a lot of latent potential. I want to show you that you can speak English, you can do it. I want to get you inspired, I want to get you fired up, I want to connect with you. I want to show you guys that this is something you can do. Okay, now, we have quickly read the story. We have done our vocabulary breakdown, so it's time for the richest part of this lesson, the most useful part of these videos, the deep dive. The deep dive. We are going to revisit, revisit or visit the story again. And this time, we're not going to go quickly, we're not going to go fast. We are going to go slow and really squeeze every last bit of juice out of the language in this story. In other words, we are going to make sure we really thoroughly or completely understand. Let's take a look. "In a small town in India, there lived a man named, let's just call him Gandhi. I don't want to butcher his name again." Butcher, you guys know what a butcher is, right? Somebody who works in a meat shop and cuts meat, right? Well, we can use this word if you don't want to say a name wrong. If you don't want to mispronounce a name, you can say, "I really don't want to butcher it." Or if you think you did say it wrong, you can say, "Sorry to butcher your name." Sorry to butcher your name. "His name would later become, ooh, great word, synonymous, synonymous with nonviolent resistance." Okay, it would become synonymous with nonviolent resistance. That means you cannot think about nonviolent resistance without thinking about his name. You put them together in your mind, you see them as the same thing in your head, right? So after Gandhi changed India, uh, he became synonymous with nonviolent resistance, okay? And the fight for independence, independence, okay? Standing alone, being independent, not being controlled, in this case by Great Britain, right? Okay, Gandhi's journey, his journey, his mission began in the hustle and bustle of London. Ooh, great word, great expression, hustle and bustle. That means there's a lot of activity. There's a lot going on here, it's very busy, lots of people, lots of stores, lots of money being exchanged. People are rushing about their daily lives, there is a lot of hustle and bustle, okay? "In London, he studied law." Now, despite the challenges, he remained steadfast in his beliefs. Okay, so we know that Gandhi faced a lot of challenges. It was very difficult, his journey, but despite that, we talked about this in my last video, in spite of the challenges, right? Despite them or in spite of them, he remained steadfast in his beliefs. He did not waver, he did not shake, he did not change his beliefs. "Upon returning to India, Gandhi was appalled." Another fantastic word here, appalled, he was shocked, really made upset. He was upset, made unhappy by, by what? By the injustices he witnessed, okay? Injustices, that means the wrongdoings, the wrongdoings. The things he saw that he thought weren't fair, weren't right, weren't okay. He saw a lot of things he thought were very bad. Witnessed means saw, right? He witnessed these things, he saw these things. Saw all of these bad things and the injustices made him appalled, they really upset him. "He could not construe." Vocabulary word. "He could not figure out." Construe. "He could not figure out how people could be treated so poorly." So poorly, so badly, right? "Determined to make a change." He had made up his mind to make a change, to make a difference, okay? "He began to peruse." Uh, vocab word, "to closely examine the laws and texts that governed his land." We took a long look at this sentence in the vocabulary breakdown. I think we know what it means. "With each new piece of information, each new bit, each new item of information, his resolve grew stronger." Ah, his resolve, that means he is not going to change his mind, right? He is going to remain steadfast in his beliefs. Not only is he going to remain steadfast, but his resolve is growing stronger. He's becoming more and more determined. "He realized that the latent power within the masses could be awakened." Through what? Through unity or coming together, coming together. He wants to bring people together in order to awaken their latent power, their dormant power, the power that is sleeping within them. He wants to awaken that power through coming together and nonviolent protest. If you protest, then you are taking a stand against something. You are taking a stand against something. I'm protesting against unequal pay for women, for example, right? I see that there's this societal problem where men are being paid more than women for the same job and I decide to take a stand. I'm going to protest against that. Maybe there's a company that's doing this and I go protest against the company. Now, there's two ways that I could protest. I could protest violently or I could protest nonviolently. If you protest violently, maybe you use weapons, you use force to get what you want. You try to hurt them physically, right? Nonviolence is what Gandhi stood for. Nonviolence, right? That was the power of words, the power of language, the power of ideas, not fists and weapons. Gandhi organized or put together, he put together, he organized these peaceful marches. Peaceful, nonviolent, right? Peaceful marches, lots of people walking together. Here's a person walking, here's another person walking. They're walking together, they are marching, 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 right? Boycotts and strikes. Um, if you boycott a product, that mean, that means you say, I will not use this product. I refuse to use this product because of the company. Maybe you don't like the way a product is made. Maybe you don't like a person who works for a company. Maybe you don't like a social issue. Uh, you don't like the stance that the company has on a social issue, right? You don't like what they stand for. So you say, I'm going to boycott this product. I'm not going to drink this drink anymore or eat this food or use this product. I'm boycotting them. I am boycotting them, right? Strikes, you're saying, I'm not going to work anymore. I refuse to work. I'm striking. So Gandhi organized all of these things, which inspired millions to join his cause or this idea, this, this thing that he believed in, okay? The cause of Indian independence and freedom, right? His ability to turn the tide, ooh, great expression here, turn the tide. Or we could also say, turn the tables, turn the tables against the British Empire was nothing short of remarkable. Hmm, nothing short of, that's a really great way to say very. Uh, it was remarkable. It was not anything less than remarkable. It was very remarkable. Remarkable means special. There's something special about it. There's something impressive, something impressive about it. Something that makes you notice it and go, wow, that's remarkable. If you notice something that's remarkable, uh, it really grabs your attention and makes you say, wow, that is different. Wow, that is special. People often said he was a man who could move mountains with his words. Yeah, once again, how is Gandhi doing all of these things? He's doing them nonviolently. He's moving mountains. He's making a, a, a big change in his country. He's achieving the impossible, right? And how is he doing it? He's doing it with his words. He's doing it nonviolently. He never believed in using force or violence, but rather the power of the human spirit. Hmm, his superpower was appealing to this, appealing to the human spirit, reminding people of the importance of seeing each other as being human, as being a human being, right? Being a human being, that's a little bit hard to say. But basically he's encouraging people to see one another for what they really are. For human, for being a human, right? That was his superpower, not hurting people with violence or force, but reminding them to look deep into one another's souls and see the power and the beauty of the human spirit, the spirit, who we are deep down. We're not just flesh and bones. We're not just bodies with brains that, that pilot the bodies around. We're more than that as human beings, right? And the part of us that's more than just flesh and blood, that's our spirit. Or maybe our soul, you could say, right? Our soul. So Gandhi was good at helping people remember this. One of the most memorable events, memorable or, uh, event that really sticks out. Something that happened that is not easy to forget, something that's very memorable, was the salt march, okay? Thousands followed him on a 240 mile trek. A trek is like a difficult journey, like a hard journey and usually on foot. Yeah, if we talk about a trek, then you are walking on foot. You're not taking a car or a bike usually, you're, you're walking, okay? A trek, very long trek to what sea? The Arabian Sea, where they made their own salt in defiance of British laws. So they're making their own salt, producing their own, their own salt, crafting their own salt in what? In defiance of something, in defiance of what? In defiance of British laws. So they're doing this to go against British laws, to protest, to stand up to British laws, right? This act of civil disobedience, ooh, there's a $10 expression for you. A big, complex expression. This act of civil disobedience became a turning point in India's struggle for independence. Okay, this is a really big sentence here. Let's break this down. So the salt march, making their own salt and this long, long trek to the Arabian Sea. It was an act, an act of what? An act of civil disobedience. What does that mean? That means you are disobeying, you are saying no to something and you're doing it in a civil way. What does civil mean? It means cultured, it means mature, it means adult. You're not doing it in a childish way. You're not doing it in a reckless or careless or destructive way. Usually it means nonviolent, right? You are saying no in a responsible way, okay? And this act became a turning point. It's when big changes happen. It's when big changes happened, right? This turning point, a turning point in what? A, a turning point in, in what event? In the struggle for independence, India's struggle for independence. They are fighting, that's what a struggle is. They're fighting to be independent or to be their own country and not be controlled by the British Empire anymore, okay? Throughout his life, Gandhi remained humble. He stayed humble. What does that mean? Humble, this is a really interesting word, right? If somebody is humble, then they don't show off. They don't brag, you know, they don't act superior or better than other people. They don't act superior to other people. They don't act better than other people, okay? He's just an ordinary guy and he always acts that way. He often said, an eye for an eye makes the whole world blind. What an amazing expression this is in English. One of the most beautiful expressions I've ever heard, right? An eye for an eye, that means you hurt me, I hurt you. I'm going to retaliate. I'm going to push back. I'm going to fight back. What does that do? That makes the whole world blind. You can't see anymore. Why? Because everybody has lost their eyes. So in other words, getting revenge against those who hurt you. Um, retaliating, fighting back, retaliating. If you choose to do that, then they'll fight back, then you'll fight back. That becomes a vicious cycle, a vicious cycle, right? A vicious cycle, you go around and around and around and around in this cycle that is endless. It never ends. So he taught to break that cycle. He said, no more violence, no more taking eyes. His teachings and actions left an indelible mark on the world. Ooh, here's one of our vocab words from the last video. We learned this last time, indelible mark. A mark that cannot be erased, a permanent mark, right? Like my tattoos are indelible marks. They're permanent marks on my body, right? Even today, people peruse his writings. They read his writings carefully and closely. Why? For inspiration, hoping to find the latent strength to make a difference in their own lives. If you are still with me, I'd like you to take a second. Give yourself a pat on the back. That means congratulate yourself because you're doing really well. We read the story quickly. We broke down the difficult vocabulary. We did a deep dive into the story and now we are going to have some speaking practice. We're going to take a look at these discussion questions or ideas from the story that can be talked about at great length, uh, at great depth, that can be deeply discussed, okay? We're going to have some speaking practice. Let's just take a look at the first question here. If you could organize a peaceful protest for a cause you believed in or some idea you believed in, what would it be and why? Another way to think about this is what's something that you really care a lot about? And, uh, if you could organize a peaceful protest for something, what would it be? In other words, what is something that you want to draw more attention to? Maybe you think that more people should care about it, right? So here's what we're going to do. I'm going to challenge you to talk about this for one full minute, okay? And I'd really like you to push yourself to keep talking for that full minute. Bonus points if you can use one of today's vocabulary words, okay? Like latent was one of today's vocabulary words. Another word was construe, construe and then peruse, peruse. If you can use one of these three words or even the idiom, move mountains, then you get some bonus points. So I'll go first and I'll just give you an example, uh, a demonstration of what I would like you to try and do. I'm going to talk for one minute. Here I go. You know, I'll be honest, one cause that I believe deeply in, and if I could, I would organize a peaceful protest for is men's mental health. I think that this is an issue that has gotten some more attention recently in society. But up until recently, it has been greatly overlooked. I think that a lot of men struggle with mental health issues. And not only do they struggle with mental health issues, I think they don't know where to turn. They don't know who to go to, who to talk to about these mental health issues. And I think that's a big problem. I would like to raise awareness. I would like to make more people aware, make more people know about this issue. Okay, that was my response. Now it's your turn. Once again, push yourself to really go for the full minute. Don't stop talking. Go ahead. Let's move on to question number two. How do you think Gandhi's methods of nonviolent resistance could be applied to modern issues today? Woo, this is a really tough topic. I'll go first for one minute. Yeah, Gandhi is a really remarkable figure from history uh, because of the, of his nonviolence, right? Because of his nonviolent resistance, his name is synonymous with, uh, this non, this nonviolent protesting. In other words, when people think about Gandhi, they think about nonviolent resistance. And of course, even today, we can still learn a lot from this. Um, you know, a lot of protests all over the world, not just in any one particular country, can easily turn violent. And the second that violence is brought in to a, a conflict, I think the people, uh, acting out the violence, they lose a lot of credibility, right? It's hard to trust them. It's hard to believe them. It's hard to agree with them. So they could really take note of Gandhi's style. Okay, that was my one minute. Now it's your turn. Go ahead. Moving on to number three. Which qualities of Gandhi, which things about him or characteristics? Hmm, good word. Which of his characteristics do you admire the most? And how can you apply them to your own life? Woo, another big question. Basically, which parts of Gandhi, which parts of his person, which parts of his character, of who he is, do you look up to, look up to? Do you admire the most and how can you apply them or use them in your own life? Once again, I will go first. Here I go. One thing that Gandhi did really, really well is tolerance, tolerance. Being tolerant of people you perceive as being ignorant, people you, you think of as being opposed to you, the other side. He was very tolerant of them, right? Because there was a lot of, of violence against his people, against the Indian people, a lot of pain. And it would have been very, very easy to take the eye for an eye route, okay? Um, but instead he saw the latent potential of nonviolence. And he was tolerant. He didn't fight back. Even when they hit him, he did not hit back. So that's tolerance and I think that maybe I could learn from that. Um, I think I could be more patient. I think I could be more tolerant like Gandhi. Okay, guys, your turn. One last time, really push yourself. Go for it. Fantastic job with this video, guys. If you are still watching, then you have done something really incredible for your English. You have made a big investment in yourself and I applaud you for that. But don't let the study session end here. I'll put another one of my videos on the screen. Keep going, keep learning. I'll meet you there.